Good evening and welcome to downtown Grand Forks. This is the JDA meeting for April 19th, 2021. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Levine.
Here.
Mayor Bochensky.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two, JDA action items. 2.1, award bid LM canteen fit up.
Thank you Chairman Mock. Chairwoman Mock, excuse me. We're here tonight to discuss the bids for the canteen fit up at LM's plant. Last fall, the JDA approved moving forward with a combined lease renewal and fit up of their canteen. At that time, it was budgeted at $175,000 with the idea that the JDA would front the funds and then LM would repay it at 2% over the three-year term of the lease. The project was advertised and bids were opened on April 15th. The bid tab is attached. There were three bidders. Low bid was received by diversified contractors, but the low bid was substantially over the project budget. However, LM has spoken to the folks at GE and they have requested that the JDA agree to increase the budget, which then would still be amortized at 2% over the three years. And then that would lead to a request to award the contract to diversified in the amount of $194,900, which is the base bid, including a deductive alternate to give you that final project cost of $194,900. The project budget went up, but the effect to the JDA is neutral because LM will be paying the full cost over the course of their lease. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions, but the request is to authorize proceeding with the contract as I just described.
Comments or questions?
I'll move approval. Second?
Let's open the public hearing. Hearing no comments, let's close the public hearing and we'll go back to council. Now we have a motion by Weber, second by Cavami. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 2.2, C-Run loan request, Paragon Pro.
This program is coming to you directly from Growth Fund Committee last night. This is typically, we have a gap in between, but there were some unusual circumstances. So we're asking you to look at it on kind of short notice. If you have any strong concerns, it can certainly be tabled for two weeks until the regular JDA meeting, but Brandon Baumbock from the EDC will present the request.
Thank you, Meredith. Members of the authority, Chairmember Mock, happy to present the application from Paragon Pro. As you may recall, Paragon Pro took over ownership of Telpro back in 2018. Before that, Telpro had an operation since 1972. At the time they took it over, they've only increased sales and continued growth of both product line and overall sales and revenue. In 2020, they had projected their best year yet. As of COVID came in, that didn't exactly happen. The first six months, they had seen a downturn in those sales, but they were able to rebound in the final six months of the year, primarily through diversification of their customer base. So this has actually put them in an extremely good position, showing almost a 60% growth January over January. They're in a position to grow, but this in addition to supply chain constraints, they are in a cash flow challenged situation. The C-Run program is aimed at relieving COVID impact. This is a perfect fit for that application. The total request is $200,000 at 1% over 60 months. That's a five-year working capital number with the option of that 12-month deferral built into the program. Loan to value of 98.88%, and this is secured through a blanket UCC filing and personal guarantees of the company, which are sufficient for recovery should that be needed. This has been in front of the EDC board, has been approved, and this has also gone in front of the C-Run Approval Application or Approval Committee. Trent and Trevor Ballmer from the company are present in case there are any questions, and I'm happy to stand for any questions as well.
Are there any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Bochensky.
Thank you, Chairwoman Mock. I just want to say thank you to Paragon Pro. I think you guys being flexible and allowing us to move this from the EDA revolving loan fund to the C-Run, which is a program we haven't filled as fast as we'd like to, and if we don't use it, we lose it. So we appreciate everything that you guys are doing and hopefully this will work to expand and create a lot more employees. So, thank you.
Move approval?
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. Do we require a public hearing for this? Okay, let's open the public hearing. Seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing. Any further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, accept EDA grant for the Grand Forks Technology Accelerator Project. Good evening.
JDA President Mock, thanks for being here. We're asking this evening, this is going to be a combined, we want the Jobs Development Authority to accept this grant of $1,79,000 and some change. And then at the City Council meeting, Mayor Bochensky, he'll pull it just to have the city of Grand Forks accept it. This is a joint award. The city of Grand Forks is the lead recipient, meaning that city staff, administrative staff will have to be responsible with all the paperwork and all that sort of thing, even though this building is owned by the Growth Fund and overseen by the Jobs Development Authority. As we move forward, just I want to give a lot of thanks to a lot of partners. I've mentioned that in one of the bullets, you know, private sector partners, the Grand Forks Region EDC, UND Center of Innovation really are going to be partners as part of this project as we move forward. What I would anticipate, we would, you would see initially as number one, we bring through the final design-construction agreement for your approval so we can move forward with the project. Our intent is to bid this project this fall for winter construction with a spring startup. And as you mentioned, if you were here previous with the Growth Fund Committee, prices are quite high right now for building construction. So I think if we hit that fall and through the winter construction period, I think we'll be better off as we move forward. Number two, the other part is Mayor Bochensky and I have spoken since this is a joint project, President Mock, is that there is going to be an oversight committee that's going to review this investment and how we're running this from a technology accelerator. And so there's going to be an oversight board. So we certainly would want to engage you as the president and Mr. Weber as a Growth Fund Chair on selecting appropriate folks to move forward as part of that oversight committee, and it's spelled out in the grant application. The second thing is you're going to see the technology program accelerator itself move forward, and obviously the oversight committee will review that and how we're doing and that sort of thing. And so again, if you were here previously, there was the accelerator loan program, the higher-risk loan portfolio, that's really going to be mesh well with this. Not only do people need coaching, mentoring, and those sorts of things, they're also going to need some capital. So I think that's really going to mesh really well, not only with our own program, but with the LIF program. So that's going to be quite significant. Finally, in parallel, we've been working with workforce development. So not only, you know, are we low in technology jobs and we're a third of where we should be, and so I think on the horizon, things are going to be much better than they ever have been before. The other thing that we've heard is workforce development. And our HR department went ahead and looked at what we need from a workforce development perspective, and a lot of those are the upskilling or transferable skills or soft skills, whatever term you want to use, and that's leadership management, communications, those sorts of skill sets. So not only in the technology sector, but also throughout our community. And so when we survey certain companies like True North with John Anken, who's an investor in this, those are the kinds of things his company needs too. So one of the pushes from the previous city council, and I'll have to give Mr. Cavami's predecessor, Sandy Marshall, had asked us what we need to be doing work on behalf of not just the city of Grand Forks, and this was from a human resource perspective, but do things for the whole community. And really, this workforce development initiative really is going to do that. It's going to provide workforce development, not only for the city, but for the entire community as we move forward. So that's the third piece, and you'll see that also. We're working with the UND Graduate School to develop a curriculum, and you'll see that, and we've hired a PhD trainee ship that's going to come through, and she's going to present what she believes should be the curriculum. So when we get to the curriculum part, it may be UND professors, it may be people in certain industries that are going to teach these courses. It could be a variety, but we're going to kind of set the paradigm. So it's really an exciting time in many ways, and really our ultimate goal is to grow the economy, grow this cluster, and provide really great opportunities for training and upscaling in our community. So with that, I'd ask to accept this. A lot of work to be done to make it truly successful. We want to do that on behalf of not only the city of Grand Forks, but the Jobs Development Authority.
Thank you. Any initial questions for Mr. Phelan? Seeing none, do we need a public hearing for this one? Okay, let's open the public hearing. No one's coming forward, let's close the public hearing. Further comments, motions?
Move approval.
Motion by Weber, second by Sandy. Further comments? No. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.
All right, we'll call the order of the Board of Equalization for the city of Grand Forks, April 19th, 5:30 PM. Welcome everybody, roll call please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Levine. We have a quorum.
Thank you. 1.2, considered protest recommendations from the city assessor. Ms. Lazar, since it's residential, I believe you're taking over, so please take it away.
You got me today. We had two appeals that showed up two weeks ago at our initial Board of Equalization. The first one is at 2511 Pembroke Drive. This is a property that's an attached, single-family or twin home residence built in 2005. It has a full basement with finish, has a two-car attached garage. We completed a review of the property to ensure that our listing was accurate. We didn't find any errors. The majority of the twin homes in this area are on slab. This one is a little bit different in that it has a full basement with finish. In reviewing our sales of twin homes with full basements with finish, we saw that our value was probably a little hot, and so we're recommending that the value of this property be reduced from $359,200 to $331,700 for 2021. In my opinion, this value is fair and equitable with similar properties. I have communicated with the owner what our reconsidered value is, and he has approved that. Any questions on that particular one?
Any questions from council? I'll move approval. Mr. Weber, motion to approve, second from Ms. Mock. All those in favor on 2511 Pembroke Drive, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That's approved. Move on.
And our second one is 411 Reeves Drive. This is a large two-and-a-half-story dwelling built in 1888 on Reeves Drive. It's 4,251 square feet with a two-car detached garage and a carport that was built and added in 2018. I was, I did an exterior-only inspection of this property. We did find errors on our listing in this particular one, such as a covered porch we had listed as an enclosed porch. We reviewed the sales that have happened on Reeves Drive to ensure that our reconsidered value was supported by our market. The review of the property and our listing, again, indicates that our value was overstated, and we are recommending that the 2021 value be reduced from $596,300 to $534,800. And again, this is fair and equitable with similar properties, and I have communicated that with the property owner, and he's in agreement with our reconsidered value as well. Again, any questions for me on this particular property?
Same process, any questions, comments from council?
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weber. We'll take it again, second from Mock. Assuming there's no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The third appeal was withdrawn, as you have on your...
A motion carries, thanks, Terry. We've got a seat now.
Yep. Sorry, go ahead.
Nope, you're good now, go ahead.
We just need to certify our 2021 annual assessments. With the changes of these two properties included in our values, I'd like to certify that our 2021 true and full value is $5,791,118,600 to the county auditor.
Well, that's great. I think, you know, you see the speed of these that move through, and the fact that there's only two shows what a phenomenal job our assessing team is doing. Even the protests, only two of the three made to the light of day. So thanks for everything that you do. With that, any comments or questions regarding 1.3? All right, we got a motion to approve from Mr. Sandy. Need a second, second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
The last item is you all have in front of you, our annual report. That has been emailed to you as well this morning from Mr. Hodak, but if you have any questions in reviewing it, please let us know. We will have it attached to our website in the next couple of days as well.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion from Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Cavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Last but not least, I'll call the order of the Grand Forks City Council meeting Monday, April 19th, a little later than 5:30, 5:50. With that, welcome everybody, and roll call, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Levine. We have a quorum.
Thank you. 1.2, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, mayor's announcement's got a few. Everyone I'm sure is anxiously waiting. Spring cleanup week is coming, first week of May. There is an electronics collection event, May 1st, so we think, I believe that's a Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Public Works. They've got that set up, so there's no contact. It's free for all city residents. And then spring cleanup will follow, May 3rd to the 7th. They'll be coming by on the day that you normally have your garbage picked up, so get it out there by 7:00 AM. And then extended landfill hours as well that week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And also on Saturday, the 1st and the 8th, there's extended hours from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. What else have we got? The PBR Rodeo was in town, that was quite a great event to see everybody get out there. I was humbled, they gave me a B Cowboy Award, I was definitely humbled and blushing in the stands. It was a, it was a fun show, so I was glad to be there. A great event, Larry Center did a phenomenal job getting that dirt in and out, so they'll be ready for the next event. We got a big football game coming up this Saturday after we saw the pairings there of the FCS tournament, so good luck to Coach and our fighting Hawks for their football tournament. Lastly, just wanted to give a thank you out, not only to the governor for signing that, but HB 1435 was signed into law today, and that was the bill that offers dependents of first responders who have passed away, the option to continue receiving healthcare insurance indefinitely through the ND-PERS plan. So I wanted to thank, that was brought forward by our local legislature, so I wanted to, legislators, I want to give a special thanks to Zach Istu, who sponsored that, was the spearhead of that. You know, obviously this hits close to home, and this could very well have been called the Halti Bill. So one more thing to be able to come out of this that can hopefully have some positive in the future. And that's all for mayor's announcements. We'll move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is presentation, citizen safety award to Ross Brozart.
Chief Lorenz, take it away, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the council. Gary Lorenz, Fire Chief here in Grand Forks, for those in the audience. The Grand Forks Fire Department is here today to recognize Ross Brozart, the citizen of Grand Forks and federal postal worker, for his timely and unselfish acts during a recent building fire. On April 6th, the fire department was dispatched to a building fire at 3506 Cherry Street. When the first crew arrived, heavy flames were visible from the second floor and the roof of the building. One of the first priorities during these types of incidents is search, rescue, and evacuation. In this case, without us knowing, Mr. Brozart had completed this task ahead of us. I believe humility to be a very admirable trait, and as I watched Ross's interview on WDAY following the fire, I was impressed by how humble he was. He had just potentially saved several lives, and then without delay, went back to working delivering the mail. It is this humility that makes him even more deserving of this award. There are actually some people from that building with us here this evening. With that, on behalf of the Grand Forks Fire Department and the city of Grand Forks, it is my honor to present Mr. Brozart with this Grand Forks Fire Department Citizen Life Safety Award, which he humbly agreed to come down here tonight to receive. So with that, it reads, presented to Ross Brozart. On Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, with flames protruding from the building, Ross Brozart exhibited admirable acts of heroism by assistuing numerous residents from a multifamily building. Due to Ross's quick actions, all residents were safely evacuated from the building. So on behalf of the Grand Forks Fire Department and the citizens, we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you have anybody else you want to have?
What's your point?
The people from the...
We need everybody.
Or if you also want to...
If you're here, could we get a group photo of anyone who's here related to this? Come on up. You've got to get in the photo too. Yeah, you've got to get in.
Well, you're the wife, aren't you? Yeah, I wouldn't want to have. Sure. I don't need to go. No, no.
I'll send it to him. I'll send it to him. Thank you.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
All right, 2.2.
Grand Forks Home Improvement Program update, Gate City Bank.
Ms. Edwardson, please.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name's Andrea Edwardson, I'm the interim deputy city planner. Here tonight to give you a quick presentation on our partnership with Gate City Bank. Last summer, Gate City approached the city to partner on a low-interest home equity loan program, 100% funded by Gate City Bank, targeting established neighborhoods and homes. Gate City offers this program in a variety of their different communities. Each one is tailored to each community, as Gate City allows that city to pick the parameters of the program to target certain needs, certain desires, things like that. So with Grand Forks, we open it up to single-family homes assessed at $250,000 or less, have to be within city boundaries, have to be zoned appropriately, and also have to be current on property taxes and special assessments. The targeted program project eligibility is pretty wide open. We allow new additions, new garages, exterior improvements, interior improvements, mechanical accessibility, pretty much the whole gamut you could think of for a home equity loan, we've allowed through, offered through this program. Staff's role in the partnership is pretty simple. We essentially, almost like we were verifying zoning, verify to check that the homes and inquiries meet the city requirements. If they do, we then pass that application along to our Gate City partners to finalize the financing and walk them through that process. Last year, we had a decent interest because we approached, or Gate City approached this kind of mid-season through their programming timeline. We were only able to offer the program last year for a couple of months. Had lukewarm interests, I would say, but still generated solid projects. This year, we actually have opened up applications starting April 1st, have had a surge of inquiries, few applications already. We're anticipating some more as that spring fever kind of gets people going. So way more interest this year that we're happy to see. Hopefully that results in some wonderful projects. The program will go through April through end of October, and with that, folks can find information on the city of Grand Forks website under the Community Development Department pages. With that, it's been a wonderful partnership so far. We hope to keep it going for a while, and I'd like to also introduce my partners at Gate City Bank, who can talk a little bit, that was the city side of things, they'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Gate City aspect of it. So with that, I'd like to introduce Becky Mindeman and her team. She's Senior Vice President of Retail Banking for Gate City Bank.
Thank you, Andrea. Good evening. So with me tonight, I have Vicky Geller, Brittany Clinton, and Katie Graham. These are loan officers in our Grand Forks area that are going to be helping members of our community when they have projects that they want to complete through this partnership. A cornerstone of Gate City Bank's mission is to serve our customers and communities by helping them create a better way of life. So the Grand Forks Home Improvement Project will improve neighborhood quality of life, encourage investment in the city's existing neighborhoods, and homeowners can preserve their homes and add to the long-term value of their property and their neighborhood. Through this partnership, as Andrea talked about, the city approves the projects, and then we come in and approve the financing portion of that. I am excited this year that, last year when we began this program, we started with a $1 million, we had $1 million in funds that we had set aside for it. We're doubling our efforts this year. We're hoping to get a lot of good feedback from the city and participation, and we have $2 million in funds that we have set aside for this program. Does anyone have any questions on it for either us at Gate City or for the city?
Any questions, council? Oh, yeah, thank you for what you're doing. You know, anytime that private sector can put money towards these types of initiatives, especially, you know, good loan programs is, you know, greatly helpful, then the city doesn't have to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then actually, yeah, if you can come down, we have a big check to show everybody showing your...
I'm getting a workout. I always wanted a big check. Ever since seeing Happy Gilmore, the movie, when I was a kid.
There we go. And you wanted one like this, correct? Thank you.
All right, 2.3.
Legislative Committee update.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Mayor Bochensky and members of city council, on behalf of Mr. Levine and Mr. Weber, I'll just give a few highlights. We did submit the House member designated projects, otherwise known as earmarks. Today, they were due by noon to Congressman Armstrong, so we did submit that. Again, two community development projects, lines in the water treatment plant, and then the three, we'll call it transportation infrastructure, 42nd Demers Underpass, 47th Avenue Interchange, and then finally, the intercity bridge. We did not designate a location, but we arranged them in those, in that order as we move forward. Also, I just want to give a few updates. One project that Councilmember Levine and I have tracked over the years is the River Alley Water Supply Project, where now it's in the budget for $50 million and an associated low-interest loan of 2% in only 30 years. So we hope to, we hope through Congress or Conference Committee to move it from 30 years to 40 years. We'll have to see what happens. And we're about 13.3% of that project, if we include our brothers and sisters from East Grand Forks, they're part of us. So that's about 2.23 million that we'll have to come up with as part of that cost share. So we're working on whether, on what that looks like, but that's going to be an important project that we'll bring back after this, after the session. Further, I understand as we work through, we mentioned the federal stimulus and how the legislature is going to use those funds, and we've received, you know, we have more than hope, I think, on the 42nd Demers Avenue Underpass. We hope to hear positive words, and so the mayor and I have only heard positive feedback on a possibility there. So if you started the session where we were versus where we are now, we have a whole lot more hope than we did to start on projects like that. So we'll have to see what happens on that, and if we, if we were successful in that, we'll have just more work to do to improve the community as we move forward. we'll have just more work to do to improve the community as we move forward. With that, I would hand it over to our two co-chairs. They're going to try to end by this Saturday, and I think our goal would be probably at the preceding city council meeting to come back here with briefings on now on the projects that we talked about, but other appropriations that I think are going to be key to the city grant, including accelerate Grand Forks and the lift funds and how that'll integrate with that. So I think it's been a good session for us, and hopefully, we can finalize the deal and come back here in a couple of weeks with a really great story. So with that, Mayor Bochensky, that's our update for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fionn. With that to the co-chairs, again, thank you for all your work and staying engaged, Mr. Weber and Mr. Vean. Did you have anything to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vean? All right, anything else from council members on that? It's winding down. It seems to have been a pretty successful session, and bonding has started, so we'll see where that leads in the state of North Dakota. All right, thank you. 2.5. Oh, we got, sorry, 2.4.
2.4 is the COVID-19 update.
Mr. Doolitz, take it away.
Mayor Bochensky and members of the council, I'm Michael Doolitz with Grand Forks Public Health Department, here to do another COVID-19 data update. Overall, the situation has improved since the last time I was in front of council. We're now out of orange and back into yellow. It seems that we have hit at least some sort of a peak in looking at our case counts, and Fargo has been following a similar trend. Unfortunately, we've been seeing a little bit of an increase in hospitalizations going with that increase that we are certainly keeping an eye on. We, our numbers for testing are still looking okay, given the situation. Our new cases have been falling relatively rapidly. Again, comparing Grand Forks to our peer counties in North Dakota, we are seeing a decrease in cases, whereas Burley-Martin, the Burley-Martin-Bismarck area is seeing an increase. It's kind of feeling like what we're, what we're seeing right now is almost like a move west in COVID cases, so it seems to have started in the Michigan area roughly, moved across Wisconsin into Minnesota, into our area, and then it seems to have hit Bismarck to some degree. It's seeming to run out of steam the further west it is moving, which does give us a little bit more confidence, and Minot hasn't seen it as well. Looking at our hospitalizations, we have seen an increase in the number of hospitalizations, with a high amount of vaccine coverage in the, in the 65-plus population for Grand Forks County. That's about 86% that have received at least one dose. We'd expect hospitalizations to still stay relatively low, but we are seeing hospitalizations. The fear when we do see those hospitalizations is that it could be, you know, individuals that are younger, of working age, you know, and we certainly don't want to see, you know, any excess morbidity or mortality. When we compare it to other communities, we're seeing a pretty hefty drop off. The Bismarck area has been roughly where we're at, and Cass County has been fluctuating. Comparing Grand Forks County to the other metropolitan statistical areas in kind of this Upper Midwest area, Grand Forks County, this is the metropolitan statistical area, so the curve looks a little bit different. When we compare it to other communities, we're starting to see either peaking or kind of a bending of the new case curve for most of these communities, particularly Fargo. Minneapolis has been seeing a pretty hefty decrease, Duluth, so there's, you know, that kind of goes along with that, you know, what I mentioned about kind of the cases moving west. Rattler still remains low. They have a high vaccination rate, so that does give us, again, a little bit more confidence that hopefully, if we get our vaccination rate up, we won't have to deal with these, you know, even small waves and outbreaks. Moving into vaccination, we have crossed the halfway point to our goal of 60% of the population in Grand Forks County being fully vaccinated. With that, unfortunately, we are seeing a slowing in our, in our vaccine uptake. So our one-dose coverage as of last Friday, so I don't have data for, that includes the event on Saturday, as of last Friday, we're at about 40% of the population that have received one dose, so 40 of the 60% that we need. You know, my concern right now is that, you know, once we get the, that, those additional people, that second dose, we're still going to be about 15,000 people short of our goal of 60% of the population having herd immunity. That said, the current plan, following with what the state is suggesting right now, the current plan for vaccination is to wind down the vaccination clinics, the large-scale vaccination clinics at the Alair Center, and then move to more of a decentralized model, where we are working with other entities such as pharmacies, healthcare providers like Ultra, Spectra, Grand Forks Clinic, other entities in the community to get, get vaccine out into areas where, where there's a little bit more time to have a little bit more intentional conversation between individuals, you know, healthcare provider conversations, things of that nature, to try and get it at locations where people would feel most comfortable to get the vaccination, where they'd feel most comfortable to get, you know, to have those good conversations to help combat things like vaccine hesitancy. Looking at Grand Forks, we have made, you know, as I had mentioned before, this is just a graphical representation of Grand Forks and our vaccination rate. We have moved a fair amount on here. We just need to kind of finish up those last few people in red, and we're kind of fighting, you know, a battle right now because of the concerns about vaccine hesitancy. When we compare Grand Forks to other communities in the state, we have slowed down a little bit in comparison to Cass County, who's at about 35% of their population being fully vaccinated. We are still above the state, the Bismarck area, and the Minot area. So coming back to vaccine hesitancy, you may have seen this, you know, graph put out earlier this week. This was put out by the Department of Health and Human Services. What they did was, they took data from a census pulse survey. This pulse survey was randomly sent survey, sent to people's phones. I was actually a participant in the survey, because I was randomly selected. They sent it out to about 13,000 North Dakotans each week for like two and a half months. They got about a 4.7% response rate, so about 6,000 North Dakotans. But the best I can tell, they really aggregated data a lot for the, this, for this graph, because you can tell when you look at Minnesota versus North Dakota, even though they broke it apart into different areas, such as the public use microdata area is what they call it, there's still a big difference between Minnesota and North Dakota, which wouldn't make sense, particularly in Northwest Minnesota and Northeast North Dakota, where you'd expect there to be a lot more similarity. So for Northeast North Dakota, including the Grand Forks area, it put our hesitant rates, that's individuals saying they would probably not, or certainly not get the, or yeah, certainly not get the COVID vaccine, it put that rate at about 25% of the adult population or 27% versus the Northwest Minnesota, where the hesitant, again, the people that would probably not, was about 12%. The strongly hesitant, which would, are the people who said, "I am certainly not going to get the COVID vaccine," was 17% for Northeast North Dakota and about 6% for Northwest Iowa. So when we take those percentages, and we take those percentages, and we just multiply that by the adult population in Grand Forks County, that could give us our vaccine hesitant population anywhere between about 14,800 people and 3,300 people. So we do have a lot of people that we need to convince. Unfortunately, you know, about 15,000, 14 to 15,000 people, we need to get vaccinated to get to that herd immunity. We can only afford to have about half of those individuals turn it down, or, sorry, half of the available individuals, about 26,000 people, would be left. We need 14,000 people to get vaccinated, so we need about half of the people that are left to get vaccinated to reach that point. For the 14,000 people who are hesitant, that puts us at a little bit of a disadvantage. So to put this graphically, this is the graph that I had before. If we had that population, 14,000 people that were vaccine hesitant, saying they were probably not, or certainly not going to get the COVID vaccine, that would put that population at basically everybody that is kind of in our wiggle room, the people that, you know, we can accept not getting the vaccine and still hit 60%. You know, this is, this is kind of, I'm presenting this as a little bit of a worst-case scenario to demonstrate, you know, that things might slow down a little bit on the vaccine front. We're already seeing that. You know, we have a lot of work to do, but, you know, I am hopeful for our ability to get the community vaccinated. One thing that isn't included on this graph is that Pfizer is expecting, hopefully before the end of the school year, to add in 12- to 15-year-olds in the vaccine-eligible population. That would give us about 3,000 more people in Grand Forks County that we can vaccinate. And then this, this vaccine hesitant population also doesn't include the 16- and 17-year-olds. That's about 1,200 people in Grand Forks County. So looking at our bottom line, we've seen a decrease in case incident, case incidence, so that's a good thing. We got from the orange back into the yellow. Our breakthrough infections in general have been low. I can only speak about this in a very general manner, but our breakthrough cases have been well within the vaccine efficacy parameters. You know, they talk about, you know, roughly 94, 96% for the Pfizer-Maderna vaccines to prevent infection. It's been well below that. Looking at our weaknesses, a slowing vaccine uptake is something that will be a challenge for us in the coming weeks. We have a vaccine team that we've been able to expand a little bit, led by Haley Brunner, normal vaccine coordinator, who's going to be doing a lot of work to try and kind of take our efforts on the road to try and increase that vaccine rate. The increase in COVID-19 hospitalizations, I hope to see that starting to decrease this week, but that increase, again, following a slight increase in cases, is still worrisome that we are going to see that with case increases in the future. And then our threats with the halt of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, that does, that does kind of slow some of the effort that we had, or some of the momentum that we had in the community. Early indications are that we could have Johnson &amp; Johnson back as early as Friday, but that is dependent on the opinions of the, they call it the ACIP, the Independent Review Committee for Vaccinations. With that, I am open to any questions. As always, I do have additional measures available that are included on the agenda.
All right, any questions or comments for Mr. Doolitz? President Sadie.
Mr. Doolitz, thanks for the great information, as always, and for what you and the rest of public health are doing for us. I'm curious if you have any aggregate data related to the City of Grand Forks versus the entire Grand Forks County, because as we know, if Northwood decides they're not going to get vaccinated, it's going to make us difficult and make our numbers look worse. So do you have any, anything you can share?
I don't have any data related specifically to the City of Grand Forks. We have, you know, relatively good data that we get from the state. That data isn't going to be easily de-aggregated to Grand Forks City.
Well, Northwood, get vaccinated too, please.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Weber.
Mr. Mayor, thank, thank you for your support of vaccinations, and that's all I have.
Yeah, we've got to keep getting the word out and get that push there. I still think that's the best economic driver we have, is getting people vaccinated, so people can get out and participate in the economy again, and do it in a safe way. So tell your friends, neighbors, everyone that you can. With that, any other questions for Mr. Doolitz? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, 2.5, Proclamation Oncology Nurse Month.
All right, this is the last council meeting of the month, so we will get ahead of the game here. Oncology Nursing Month is May 2021, so I've got the following proclamation. Whereas oncology nurses are committed to providing quality oncology care, and whereas oncology nurses have demonstrated excellence in patient care, teaching, research, administration, and education in the field of oncology nursing, and whereas oncology nurses endeavor to educate the public in the prevention and treatment of cancer, now therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, hereby proclaim May 2021 as Oncology Nursing Month, and urge all citizens of Grand Forks to join in the observance of and participate in activities to recognize the special contribution oncology nurses provide to the public. Thank you, nurses, oncology nurses. All right, we will move on to three public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend the zoning map to include Memorial Village, PUD Lot 2, Block 1, Memorial Stadium, Resubdivision, located at 2625 Second Avenue, North.
Thank you. Open the public hearing from 3.1. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. We got a motion for approval from Mr. Vean, and a second from, let's give it to Mr. Weber. Any other further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.1, that motion carries.
3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend the zoning map to include UND Wolkersen P3, housing PUD on Flatt Park's Grand Forks Township, 3500 Block of University Avenue.
Thank you. We're going to bring forward Mr. Mike Peeters, who is the Associate VP of UND Facilities. Is he here tonight? That was the plan. I guess you're taking over, Mr. Brooks. If you want to give just a couple, and we'll do 3.2 and 3.3 together, if you want to give a little information on that, we thought we were going to have Mr. Peeters here, and then we'll move them individually.
Unfortunately, he wasn't able to attend. He probably would have done this much better than I will, so my apologies ahead of time. But I will, I'll first explain the Wolkersen PUD. For those who don't know, this is on the west side of the English Cooley. In your packets, we did have a display here. So right over here is the English Cooley. Here's University Avenue, Stanford Road. So this is the area that's going to be mostly for the freshman dorms. It currently is, but what they're going to do is McVeigh and West currently are located down here next to University Avenue. They're going to tear those down, and they're looking to make two L-shaped rebuild of those, and so that they'll have kind of this nice quad area in the middle as well to, this will be an area for the students to be able to hang out, have some outdoor area there, which actually is somewhat missing there now with the way the tunnels go. They're kind of half in the ground, that type of thing. So Brennan, Selke, and Noren will stay as, as is. There will be some fit-up on the inside. They're set up in suite style, which is actually the preference of most incoming students, so they think that they can do, just make some slight improvements there with the, with the way those are set up. And all these improvements are really centered around the improvements that were already done with Wolkersen Hall. That's the dining hall there, and if anybody's had a chance to go through that, it's a really fantastic building, views towards the Cooley, which is located right over here. So that's, that's item 3.2. 3.3, I'll hop into that one as well, which is just on the other side. We're calling that one the Princeton PUD. And that's centered around Squires Hall, which is the, the, kind of the eating area, I think, on the east side of Cooley. This one isn't necessarily always open. Most of the kids go over to Wolkersen. They're going, looking for a future to tear down walls, squires, and beck. The, the setup on those are very small. The rooms are very tiny, and so they're looking to go with, which can be shaded in yellow here. Fantastic setup there for first-floor commercial potential with probably older dorm style above, so you, you could end up with sophomores, juniors in there. And this feeds into some of the work that was already done. Oxford moving and aligning to the south here. Here's where the new business school is going, and if anybody hasn't been down to university, there's just some fantastic streetscaping that they've done, the improvements there over the last couple of years. So all that, that's kind of the quick kind of rundown for those two, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Well, I was just going to call on Mr. Vean real quick, because I think in all your time with the city and different facets, just to highlight how exciting and how unique these types of P3s are. I know you had an interest in it last time this came forward, so if you want to say a couple of words.
Sure. I just, I thought everybody should be aware of what's happening at the university, you know, with all the construction that's happened in the recent past, and what's happening now, and what we're planning for the future, is really going to make it a great destination for people to come and visit, and to kids to go to school, and help recruiting and bringing people in. And I haven't, I've seen bits and pieces of this, so it was nice to see you put the whole thing together and see what's happening along with the project we just approved prior to this for the public hearing, as it's just. just approved prior to this for the public hearing. It's just, I don't know, great projects for the city of Grand Forks, so.
All right, well, we'll start with 3.2 then. I'm going to open the public hearing for 3.2. All right, the public hearing is closed. The other comments?
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Weigle. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. 3.3, we're going to go right into the, why don't we read it off? Mr. Stod?
Yep. Public hearing and second reading ordinance to amend the zoning map to include UND Princeton P3, housing PUD on Plaidmont Parks, Grand Forks Township, 400 block of Princeton Street.
And with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Same process.
Move approval.
Got a motion approved from Mr. Weigle, have a second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.3, motion carries.
3.4 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend zoning map to include Chrisis Rex PUD Lot 2 and 3, Block 11, University Place Addition, located at 3,024 and 3,012 University Avenue.
All right, with that, I think again, we'll start with the public hearing on 3.4. All right, the public hearing is closed. With that, we'll open up any comments or questions. Mr. Weber, please.
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve. We got a second from Mr. Weigle. Was there any other further comments or debate on the hearing? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you.
3.5 is public hearing and second reading ordinance to amend Chapter 18 Land Development Code B3 General Business District Zone to allow large animal clinics as a conditional use.
All right, same process. 3.5, public hearing is open. Public hearing closed. Got a motion to approve from Mr. Sandy. Anybody else want to get out of there? Ms. Mock seconds it. Any other further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
And 3.6 is a public hearing and resolution and necessity and determination of protest for Project Number 7539, District Number 737, paving streetlights for Oscarville. Finance Department is in receipt of one protest for this project, but it is a non-sufficiency of protest.
Thank you. So with that, we'll open up the public hearing. The protestors wish to speak. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Open up the comments, questions? Mr. Motion, Mr. Kavami, motions for approval. Mr. Weber seconds. Seeing nothing further, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to approve, carries. We're on to four, action items. Let's, I wanted to pull 4.1 and 4.4. I don't think we need 4.0 after Mr. Fien to talk about it. And then 4.14 and 4.16, we're going to need a motion. Let's, can we get a motion to move 4.16 after emergency council members and before adjournment, because we're going to have to go to executive session for that? Can I get a motion on moving 417 to just before adjournment? Got a motion from Mr. Kavami and a second from Mr. Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we'll move that till the end. All right, so on the consent agenda, is there any other further motions that we'd like to pull? 4.5, mark that off. Any other, Mr. 413. All right, so I think we've got 4.1, 4.4, 4.5, 4.13, 4. and 4.14 polled. Was there any other wish to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Quick question, 4.16, we pulled out the...
We're going to, yeah, we got, we did get, Mr. Gustaf said we could bring those together, so those would be on the consent agenda. So if you want to pull, just, yeah. You want that one? Pull two? Okay, sounds good. All right, with that, I'm going to move, look for a motion on 4.0, 4.2, 4.3, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, and 4.15 on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval? Mr. Kavami, motions, and a second from Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. Let's move on then to 4.1.
Request from Valley Liquors Incorporated, doing business as Hugo's Wine and Brew for a change in class of alcoholic beverage license from a Class III, which is your on and off sale beer and wine, to a Class I, which is your general on and off sale.
Ms. Lundmark, please.
Mayor Bochensky, Members of City Council, back at your March 1st meeting, you approved a request for a Class III Beer and Wine Alcoholic Beverage License from Valley Liquors for their new Hugo's Wine and Brew store, which will be located in downtown Grand Forks as part of the peer development. Subsequent to that, and on further review of their business plan, Valley Liquors is asking you to modify your earlier approval and allow a Class I General On and Off Sale. That is, better meets with their business needs and will match their other off-sales throughout that they have, which also have liquor as well. Members of Hugo's are here in the audience. If you have questions for them, we'll just stand for questions. I did email some information out regarding their plans to council members prior last week, so.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions from the council?
Move approval.
Motion approved from Mr. Weigle. We have a second, we got a second from Mr. Sandy. Comment, Mr. Weber.
So Class I is capped at, a vendor can have two of those?
Yes.
And this would be their second?
No, Mayor Bochensky, Members of City Council, Councilmember Weber, Hugo's currently holds two Class II Off-Sale Only licenses. This would be their first Class I license, which is an on and off sale license.
Thank you. Any other further comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
4.4 is application of tax incentive, Core Scientific.
Thank you. This one did get unanimous approval at the committee of the whole, but Council President Sandy had asked a question in regards to possibly extending that period or finding another way. Certainly, other taxing entities, I won't name them, but are having some struggles right now, so it was a way to maybe get some funding there sooner rather than later. Certainly something to, a great question to ask and something to get an answer to. With that, I believe we have, we have Mr. Pratt online that could give us some insight on what he brought back to his board and how they're feeling about that possible request. Let's see if we got him. Are you there, Mr. Pratt? Oh, she said one second. All right, Mr. Lund, if you want to fill the dead air, you can until Mr. Pratt gets on. I know you've had conversations with him as well.
I was just, good morning, Mayor, or good afternoon.
Take it away, sir.
Hey, thanks for having me back here at the city council. I do want to say first and thank you for the question from Councilmember Sandy. We did take it back. We had a meeting with our CEO and our leadership team. We did consider the idea of a 10-year, 50% tax abatement instead of five years zero and then going to full property tax. Unfortunately, given how far along we are in the planning cycle for this project, how critical this project is to us, we're going to have to ask that we stick to the original five years of zero property tax or full property tax abatement. Just three main points. So this is a capital-intensive business. We're making a tremendous investment here in Grand Forks if all goes well. We came up a few, maybe $3 million short in our original construction line of credit funding. We've decided to waive that component of our letter of intent with Maine Code. We're going to move ahead and fund that ourselves. So we gave a good and strong consideration. And last, our lending partners already had the abatement into their due diligence process. So pretty made in the game for us to consider a change, but we certainly want to respect and say we do understand the challenges in the city, but hopefully we can move forward as originally designed.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. We certainly appreciate it and certainly hope in the future, you know, that you landed here and we can see add-on investments, whether it's in the repair of machines or further investment in training. So certainly appreciate everything that your company has done to keep us on the radar and on the map and looking at setting up here. So much appreciated. Any other questions? Or we got Mr. Pratt here, Mr. Sandy?
I'd just like to say thank you for taking my thoughts into consideration, and I will move approval.
We got a motion to approve. We got a second from Mr. Weber. Any further debate or comments? Seeing none, and this is to, set the public hearing, I should clarify. It sets the public hearing for May 17th on this ASK, so this will basically set the confines of what the ASK will be at the public hearing. So with that, motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much.
4.5 is the appointment to the library board.
All right, do we have, we will open that up. Any comments or questions from the...
I'm ready to vote, Mayor.
All right, we got a motion to approve. We have a second, second from Mr. Weigle. Any further comments or debate? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.5 carries.
Okay, I believe the next...
We're on to 4.13, I believe.
4.13, sign appeal for Ironhide located at 3,900 South 42nd Street to allow for larger ground monument signage.
All right. Did you want, Mr. Veen, did you have any initial questions? You want Mr. Brooks to give it over to you first?
No, I'll just have a quick question.
Okay, please, Mr. Veen.
I was just wondering, Mr. Brooks, if there, if this warrants a modification of our code for something like this, or each one of these going to have to come in individually? Because it sounded like a legitimate, probably a change, or, and just wondered if there should be something looked at more permanent.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Veen. So in this case, we actually did ask that question. You know, we're looking at just along the interstate and going from an eight-foot high, 18-wide to 18-high and eight-foot wide, just reversing it, but the signs are the same. They did ask for us to continue to come back. They didn't, they didn't want to have the code amended, so that was the request of P&amp;Z. And I understand what they're looking for. They want to make sure that we're probably not going to have too many of them. So far, we've had two in about eight years or something, so that's why they said, they think that the appeal process was okay for them to continue to field them those. Obviously, city council can reverse that and direct us to do, certainly come back with something, but I think the reason was is there just hasn't been that many, and then we'll deal with those on an appeal basis.
Okay, without a move approval.
All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second, second from Ms. Mock. A motion to approve by Mr. Veen, a second from Ms. Mock. Any further comments? Mr. Sandy, please.
If I may, I was at a planning and zoning meeting. There were a few things, including number 414 that we're going to talk about next, related to signs. There is, I won't call it mass confusion, but there is definitely some hesitation by the Planning and Zoning Commission related to signs. I think the code, for one reason or another, is a little ambiguous at times, and I would suggest that we reconvene a sign committee to look at the code related to signs, members of the council, members of planning and zoning, certainly city staff, as well as the city attorney, I think would need to heavily be involved. But that's just a recommendation, Mayor. I'll leave it up to you at your discretion.
Thank you. No, I think that's a great idea. Some of that work had been in process, Mr. Brooks, or where is it at on that?
Well, we hadn't started it. It's going to, you'll probably see that as part of the budget process. We're going to be asking for some dollars coming forward potentially to, sign code is very detailed, and perhaps getting some outside help on that, just because you don't want to, that's not something you want to mess up and end up in some legal hot water.
So that, you know, we come forward with something. With planning and zoning, take a look at that first before it comes here, are you thinking? Or would it be beneficial to have some input from, you know, planning zoning committee members, as well as a council member or two along the process? Or do you want to begin the work on that and have edits made later?
Thank you, Mayor. So in this case, I think we'll probably set up a signed subcommittee, perhaps looking for some folks from city council. Have you potentially sit in, and then members of the planning commission talk about perhaps a mix of that to work through and kind of get our, dive into the whole code, because there's quite a bit of different options there.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful. I mean, we've got the 2020 census numbers are going to be coming out. I think we even have some code that's even tied to population based on number of signs, so I think some clarity there would be beneficial, definitely for everybody involved. So thank you, Mr. Sandy. Any further comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, so.
Just one more comment. I was a member of the sign committee in 2008. I think since then, there have been three other sign committees. It typically ends up on the city attorney's desk where things come to a screeching halt. So having a new city attorney involved may be beneficial, probably will be beneficial for our community, but I certainly would support, if we need to get additional help, I would be supportive in that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I think, yeah, with your experience, you'd be a great member on there, and I've got nothing but the fullest confidence that it will not come to a screeching halt. There will be a resolution on Mr. Gustaf's desk, so. Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Further comments? Oh, Ms. Mock, please.
Mr. Brooks, didn't they just look at digital signs a few years ago? Will they include that as part of a sign committee?
Yeah, I think everything is going to be looked at, and of course, there's federal law too in terms of what you can and can't look at with signs, so all those. And I know Mr. Gustaf's fully aware of some of those things as well, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any further debate or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. You might as well stick up here. Ms. Stod, please read it in.
4.14, off-premise billboard sign for South Washington Street, located at 1218 South Washington Street.
Mr. Brooks, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So in this case, the planning staff made a recommendation to approve this, and I kind of want to go through what code allows for. In this case, code allows for a limited number of billboards throughout the city. That's been in place since probably early 2000s. And then we allow for an additional, as you said earlier, Mayor, an additional billboard for every 566 people that are added thereafter. So that's kind of the overall, what we allow for in code. In addition, there's specific to South Washington Street, there's an allowance for nine off-premise billboards, signs that are allowed along South Washington Street. So we take that from Demers down south of the city. So in that case, right now, we're at, I want to say it's seven along that stretch. So first of all, there is some availability there. And then specifically, code requires three items to be looked at in terms of what's allowed, or as we look at that, the way we should be looking at that. So it talks about the creation of visual cluster, clutter, sorry. And along that stretch, as you know, a lot of the individual properties are allowed what we call pylon signs. They can go up to 50 feet high. Some of those get very large. And so each parcel, each property is allowed to have one of those signs. And so in areas where we have lots of individual lots, say our standard block in the northern part of South Washington, they're 300-foot wide blocks, and you may end up with, say, in some of those areas, every 50 feet, potentially, a sign on each of those. So when we start looking at clutter, it's relative to where you're at along that stretch. So this particular stretch, it's a 300-foot wide block on the west side of Washington. There's one ground monument sign there. And when we talk ground monument, it's not necessarily a 50-foot-high sign. It's probably, I want to say, maybe 15 feet high in that area. And it's advertising for each of the folks that are on that strip mall. This is, this particular strip mall, I'll identify it as Mexican Village Strip Mall there. I think it has a name, and Bob, I apologize for not knowing it off the top of my head, but Washington View, potentially, is what it is. But in that case, one of the things we look at is that visual clutter. The second is reduced visual sightlines at roadways, entrances onto the property where the off-premise advertisement sign will be located. That's not a factor here, so this billboard's going to be a pole, and it's going to rise up and then get above all the other signs, because they're, they really aren't trying to say, hey, come to this location. This is for off-premise advertising. So they aren't necessarily trying to be... So they aren't necessarily trying to be low and then mix with those signs. And then lastly, it's concentration of off-premise advertising signs. In this case, our concentration really is at Demers. This location is one and a half mile from that location. And then as you start to get further down, there's, I don't know if I'd call it a concentration, but there's some more around Happy Joe's. There's a couple of them in that area. So really, I guess, the only thing that was really looked at from Planning and Zoning, what I heard from them, is that they were really on the visual clutter. The applicant, and I just want to show you a couple pieces as well, so I don't know if you can put this up on the screen, Greta, hopefully. The, where they're going to put the sign is going to be in essentially one of the islands within the parking lot. So you won't see the reduction of any parking stalls either, because those are the prime a little bit in that area. And so that's one piece. Here's their one sign that's along this stretch here. And even as you look to the south, this is the old ID. They had one sign there, but again, that's one big block and one sign. So that's where I was kind of saying the clutter, to me, wasn't as much of a factor. And if code's allowing nine along this stretch, I'm not too sure where, obviously, they're thinking that if we said, okay, we're worried about clutter along the stretch, I think you'd start it further south from Demers. But in this case, they're saying South Washington, Demers, out to the ETZ. The area, this area is about as sparse of signs, at least along that block, that you can get. The applicant also provided, oh, let me grab the, one exhibit that showed what it would look like on the site. Now, this is them inputting that along a picture. So this is us looking north. Right here is where the strip mall is, and then this is where that sign would be. It would rise above, like I said, their onsite South Washington Center, many strip mall signs. So with that, I'll answer any questions, and hopefully, I'll be a little bit more with it on some of those. But Newman Signs is here too, who's the applicant and the owner of the property too. So I'll just point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I think, yeah, it's clear to point out that staff's recommendation was to approve this, and when it went in front of Planning and Zoning, it did have a split vote, but it, in the end, did carry with a non, a denied motion, essentially, you know, with a recommendation to not approve. So we'll have to make a decision. I certainly, you know, support staff's recommendation, being that we're allowed nine on this strip, and there's currently only seven, and then two have dropped off. If we're going to have that number and that limit there, we, you know, we should be looking at good locations, and I see this as a, you know, a positive location to have that. Certainly, City Council's opinion will weigh out. So any questions, comments, motions, debates from council? Mr. Kavami's ready to go, please.
Yeah, looking at the staff recommendation, and I think this really echoes the need for a Sign Committee and to understand this. I think if you look at visual clutter, I think that's just subjective. So I think there's some issue there. I think code should be a little bit more clear, but reduced visual sightlines, you look at concentration, all those things, it seems to be, this is the best spot on Washington that you could probably put one. That being the case, I'm looking forward to the Sign Committee, and I'd move approval.
All right, do we have a second? We got a second from Mr. Weigel. And the motion was to approve, so do we have any further comment? You want to start, Mr. President Sandy, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Brooks, what do we know now that the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't hear? Is there something, is there something that they missed or that I'm missing?
I think it's the subjectivity. It's probably just two different opinions in terms of that clutter. So there's three things that we can really look at, and the only one I could, that I heard from the committee was the clutter piece. So, but what the reasonings are, it's very difficult to say what, you know, there's, it was a five to three vote. I think I heard one person talk about visual clutter, and the rest, the other four, I think, went along with that, although it's difficult to say what all their reasonings were.
For my edification, although I know the answer. In what areas can these billboards be placed in town? In general, where can they go?
Industrial, unplatted areas, usually interstate, of course. I can go through and, you know.
If you walked through town, in what, I mean, name a few, is there any other place where a sign like this could currently go?
Along South Washington?
I mean, could you go way out north end on North Washington?
You could. Not a very popular spot for billboards.
Sure, but you could, you could. I mean, in theory, you could go way down south on South Washington. Don't most of those areas already have signs though?
They do, yeah.
Right. So if you were going to survey the community and draw circles, could you put a whole lot of circles where we could actually put a sign?
With billboards?
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be a few, but it would be limited. I'll definitely say that. You know, Columbia Road is not, they aren't allowed 32nd. So there are limits on where we allow them.
I think that maybe, may have been a key point that was missed during the discussion at Planning and Zoning.
Sure, that could be.
They're just, the number of places where we could put signs is limited, and I believe, since they've lost a sign, they're just simply trying to replace one, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
And that all was in part of your staff recommendation and consideration, as far as, you know, a good place to put it, you know, as far as your recommendation that you came out for approval. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any further comment, Ms. Mock?
Could we potentially have the Sign Committee also look at visual clutter and explore that issue going forward? I think it's maybe a point worth visiting, and I never like to not take their recommendation, because I do respect everybody that serves on Planning and Zoning. I think maybe in this case, since at least staff's interpretation is this kind of meets the code and abides by that, it would maybe be unfair to deny in this case. But going forward, I would be interested in, you know, the committee's recommendations and exploring that visual clutter going into the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be a great note to keep part of for, you know, later on, what exactly define what visual clutter means, which I don't know if we'll be able to, because it's person to person. But if you want to put a feet circle, something to it, maybe would be helpful. Is that kind of along the lines?
Yeah.
Great, Mr. Veen.
Yep. Mr. Brooks, I understand the staff recommendation, because obviously, you're recommending compliance with the current city code, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it's allowable, you're going with the code, how do you, how do you say no? I mean, that's the code, so you're trying to do it. I just question if we should be, if we're going to have a look at the city code and the sign ordinance, if it wouldn't be better to see how this conforms to whatever we think a new code revision should look like? If the new code says this is great, let's do it. If not, that's not. But this kind of pushes that ahead before we've taken a look at the code. And so I'd like to see us at least look at what revision to the city code we might have prior to approval of this one. I'm not for sure that criteria that they used when they developed that, whatever, years ago, is still appropriate today. And since we don't really have, you know, if we prove it, it's going to be there, it's going to be too late. So I would just like to see us hold on until we've looked at the whole code, and then at that point, we can come back.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a possibility. We, I mean, right now, we've got a motion to second on the floor, so we could, you know, could be voted down. You could make a motion to amend, but I think at this point, we've got two, a motion to second, so.
I could make a motion to amend the current one, too, but I'd rather let the motion just.
Just fail?
Just go as is, because if it's voted down, we can come back with a different, with a different motion. But that's, that's the way I think it should be done.
Would there be anything that would stop, say, we move this, and in the future, we decide to change it to, you know, I mean, granted, they're going to make the investment, there's probably risk every time they make these investments, but something could change, and all these signs could end up going down. Is that true?
Well, yeah, I guess I don't want to go there yet. What I do want to state is that when we, we could, it may be advantageous to wait for the next one, because at this point, we're going to have that release of more signs that are available. That's coming this fall, that maybe we wait, if we're going to wait and try to, maybe we move this to the front to take a look at, I would rather wait with those next sign, the next fleet of signs that'll be able to come in after the census comes in.
So maybe it makes sense to move forward with this one, and we're going to probably have a host of them as our population increases that we can later decide with.
Yeah, we're going to have some requests coming, I know that.
So we could see, I guess, we'll see how it gets voted.
You know, and the issue is, is for me, excuse me, visual clutter. It's going to be, I don't think you're going to find a definition for visual clutter. I think it's probably going to be subjective, and we'll never be able to get the definition that would be nice, because that's easy if you have a definition to figure out how to do this. I just don't think we will get that, and I probably, to be honest with you, probably not going to be in favor of adding a whole bunch more signs anyway. And so that's probably general, so I have a hard time adding this one until we have looked at the bigger picture.
Thank you. Any further comment, President Sandy?
Mayor, I would, I understand where Mr. Veen is coming from and like his logic. History indicates that we're never going to have another sign in town, though, if we wait for the Sign Committee and for something to come out of the city attorney. And there will be more signs, people coming wanting to, like tonight, wanting to change the dimensions, wanting to, whatever, and if we wait on the Sign Committee, we will never approve another sign. Nothing personal, Mr. Veen, I'd like to just move this forward.
All right, any other further comments? Mr. Weber?
Trying to keep it brief, thanks. I admire those cities that have real restricted sign ordinances, and was not inclined to support this one, but I went out. The other sign that's this size right now in town, at the 1900 block of Gateway, is the size that they'd be putting up here. This will be a two-sided electronic board, the first in town. And when I went out and looked at this stretch of Washington, if we're going to have another sign anywhere along there, this seems like a good place for it. It's as cluttered as, visually cluttered, whatever that might mean. This seems to be a visually cluttered stretch, and if we've got room for more signs, this is a place to put it, so I'm ready to vote.
All right, any other further debate?
Advertising's important for business. We want to be a business-friendly town. Thanks.
Absolutely, great point. All right, with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor with no further. I will, why don't we just do, you want to do a roll call vote? So we can just get a yes or no, we'll start with?
Mayor Bochansky, just, we should probably stay with the motion that we are.
Yeah, so we got a motion, this motion is to approve, yeah, sorry. Exactly, this motion is to approve this billboard. So with that, why don't we, if you want to take the roll call, Ms. Dorst, please.
All right, we'll start with Weigel.
Yes.
Dockler?
Yes.
Weber?
Aye, yes.
Mock?
Yes.
Kavami?
Yes.
Veen?
No.
And Sandy?
Yes.
All right, we have six to one for approval. Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, 4.16 is the preliminary approval and introduction ordinance to amend Chapter 18 Land Development Code signs as related to murals.
All right, did we have, was this, who asked for us to be polled? Was this Mr. Veen? Did you have a particular question, or you want to?
I would, I would like a better understanding of it, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Conlon, that's our guy.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the City Council, so the item before you is really a sort of an update to our last time I was here a couple of years ago for the mural code. If you recall back then, it was 2018, we made changes to code to allow murals to be painted on buildings under certain conditions. Tried to anticipate needs at that time. Obviously, as maybe expected, there's some areas that were lacking clarity when put into practice, so the goal tonight, then, would be to outline a few proposed changes to address those sort of uncertainties and try to accommodate some things that folks are trying to do in the community. So the first of the three main issues we're trying to address is to clarify conditions for murals being painted on historic buildings. You may recall, last year, Planning and Zoning, and then I believe it came to this body, approved an appeal to the sign code to allow a mural to go up on Rambus Guy's Brewery. At the time, the premise was that the protective coating that was applied would preserve the brick, protect the brick, and could importantly be removed without damage, or would allow the paint to be removed without damage to the underlying facade. So at that time, Planning and Zoning, the board had asked staff to make some changes to code clarifying essentially what those conditions are, so putting more into writing and clarifying some things to make clear what our expectations were. So that's the first thing we're trying to do with these proposed changes. The second would be specifying restrictions on sort of the size, location of artists and sponsorship credits on murals. You know, we want to make sure that artists and sponsors are able to take credit for the work that they do, but we also want the focus to be the mural, the artwork, and not necessarily so, I guess, timely, so it doesn't look like a billboard. So that's the other component that we're looking to change. Specifics on that would be that we limited to 1% of the mural's surface area or four square feet, whichever of those is less. And we require that they be located one of the corners of the mural, again, to make sure that the artist is the focus, so. The third piece would be restoration of historically significant signs, I'll call them ghost signs. We've received some significant interest over the past several years, and recently, Chad Kaia of Kaia Painting and Historic Restoration, along with Blue Weber and the DDA, they had brought forward a concept for two historic Coca-Cola signs, one on the rear of Rambus Brewery, and the other on the side of Urban Stampede, that building, to restore those. Historic Preservation has created a list of these historically significant signs or ghost signs that would sort of fall under this section. Our approach is that being that they're more recognized now for their historic value, language clarifying that is included in here, so it specifies the conditions where they, how they could be restored. And a small amendment, actually, that is suggested from when Planning and Zoning saw this the first time to now, is switching language in there to, it currently reads that ghost sign applications would, may be presented as Historic Preservation Commission for comment. We're recommending we switch that to must. We'd like to, you know, these are historically significant assets, we want to make sure that the Historic Preservation folks have an opportunity to comment on these, and help inform the process, the creative process of whoever's proposing to restore the murals. So outside of that, the rest of mural regulations would apply as is, or as they currently read. I know, I don't think Mr. Kaia was able to make it tonight in regards to specifics about the project they're proposing, but what we're trying to do here is basically strike a balance between accommodating those requests while still maintaining some sort of, you know, common sense restrictions on where and how things can go. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon, and we've got unanimous approval on this one from Planning and Zoning, is that correct?
Yeah, it is correct.
All right. Mr. Veen, any further questions? All right, anything further from council? Comments, questions, or motions? All right, we got a motion to approve, and we've got a, from Council Vice President Mock, and a second from Mr. Weber. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 4.16 carries unanimously. All right, from here, we're going to move on to five informational items.
5.1 is the Human Resources First Quarter 2021 Quarterly Staffing Report.
All right, thank you, Marine. And we'll move on to six, citizen comments?
We have none.
All right, we'll open this up. Any citizen comments? Please feel free to step forward. All right, citizen comment is closed. Moving on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1 is the vendor list as it's presented.
We have a motion to approve the vendor list. Everyone sitting back, because usually it's President Sandy's job, but here, we'll let Mr. Weber pay the bills this time, so Mr. Weber has motion for approval, and we have a second from Ms. Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Vendor list is approved.
And 7.2 is your minutes from January 4th, 19th, and February 1st.
We have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Weber, you've read them over in their hall? All right, thank you. We have a motion, we have a second, second from Mr. Kavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are approved. Moving on to eight, city administrator comments, and we've got a little bit of a special one today, so Mr. Fionn, I'll let you take it, or do you want to read an 8.1, Marine?
I can certainly do that. Recognition of our Public Works Operations Director, Lee Ray Amundson, and her retirement.
Hey, Mayor Bochansky, we're going to, Lee Ray is probably a first of a, probably our next wave of retirements, and a lot of those will be in our departmental leadership ranks. ranks. So, I just want to, we want to try to celebrate some department heads and other leading staff, don't want to be celebrated, but I want to celebrate. Lee Ray, she's been here 31 years, I've worked, I've been, had the honor to work with her for 23 of those years, and I missed one thing when I announced, is she started in the police department in records, I believe, then went to utility, billing, then went to water distribution as administrative support person, and then finished her career in public works and moved up to be the Public Works Operations Director. So, I've been able to work with Lee Ray for a lot of years, she's a humble leader, and one of the projects that I got to work with her on in the 2000s is the landfill, the solid waste landfill. So, most of you guys weren't here, again, you have left to go work somewhere else, but we had quite a time trying to set a solid waste landfill in 2000s. So, I had the honor to work with Lee Ray, and when you think of Lee Ray, you should think that without Lee Ray and all the great work she did, working with myself and our consultants, we wouldn't have a solid waste landfill here in Grand Forks. And instead of worrying about Accelerate, Grand Forks, and all these great things, we'd be worrying about simple things like where do we transport our garbage to. So, a huge thanks for what she's done, and the other thing I'm really proud of her is she's worked her way up through all these jobs. She's, she's been, if you look at our department head ranks, we have, we're probably about 50/50 men and women, and Lee Ray's one of those women, and she's working in a department where it's mostly men, and you can probably about imagine, it's not always easy leading men in her department, so she's done an extraordinary job, and I'm really proud of her. She's here, I see, I look back, even her husband Glenn made it this evening, and he's another great guy, so, you know, why wouldn't he be here this evening? So, with that, I'd like to hand it off to Lee Ray to kind of end our night with saying a few words for us.
Mr. Amundson, well, maybe being in that field with a lot of men led to the early retirement, but we'll let you speak on that.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the council, thank you for the chance to share a few words tonight. I am truly grateful for a career with the city, and as I observed my last Monday city council meeting. And I'm also grateful to my husband Glenn, who's with us tonight, and he's a genuine friend to many and a great partner in life, and I'm looking forward to spending more time with family and seeing what adventures around the corner for us. So, and I'm proud to have been a part of the city's team, providing services and customer service during some very challenging times for the city over the years, and contributing to the completion of significant capital projects, thank you, Todd, and upgrading equipment and facilities, and also enhancing career paths to attract and retain skilled operations staff. And thank you, Todd, for leading by including many people with unique skills to create a really effective team throughout, throughout our careers. And Mayor, I wish you and the city all the best going forward and a most promising future, and thank you for your time this evening.
Well, I hope this isn't your last city council, maybe I hope you'll come back and watch, they're so much fun. All right, Mr. Phelan, I think that's a great way to cap it off, we'll leave it there with you tonight. We'll move on to nine, mayor and council member comments, and we will go down the line as usual. Mr. Weigle? Comments tonight, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to ask real quick, I heard about something about oil or some type of spill in the coolie, if there's anybody that has information about that.
I heard rumblings it might have been diesel fuel from...
Yes, Mayor.
From a rail, okay, let's you...
No, we took a sample, I don't know that we have any information yet, it does have a really strong diesel fuel smell to it. We believe that it could have been just maybe either sitting in the pipe and then flushed out, or it could have come from a different source, we're really not sure. We kind of, we thought it might be closer to REA, had very good working relationships with them and trying to troubleshoot that, but most importantly, we've identified how to get it cleaned up and are working with Lepire Oil Company to do that. I don't know how much is actually out there, but we had a concern from just a citizen walking by, and were able to go take a look at it and get it, working on still getting it cleaned up this evening, so...
Doesn't seem to be an ongoing leak, you know?
No, absolutely. It's the one time, something was in the system and either came out or something had gotten dumped that, that we came across.
Still not okay, and definitely needs to be figured out, but, yeah, not an ongoing concern. Any other comments, Mr. Weigle?
That is it.
Thank you. Ms. Dockler?
The only thing I want to say is, again, thank you to Ms. Amundson, I have truly appreciated working with you over the last couple of years. You have just amazing customer service and incredible patience, and it has just been great to be able to learn from you and work with you on projects.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Mr. Weber?
Kind of quickly echo that, I thought that we had hired you fresh out of university as a subject expert through a national search. I didn't know that you'd been here so long, so it's been good working with you, enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Kavami?
I'll jump on the bandwagon. I think right when I got elected, I had reached out to you and talked about recycling and all kinds of things, and you were really informative, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
That might be the reason that you actually retired, you're sick of talking about recycling. So, we're getting to the bottom of it now. Mr. Veen?
Two items for Todd, on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, I did talk to Mary Meridian today about getting our cost participation agreement going, because I think we need to have that as we continue to invest, it's just a win-win, so that would be one item you and I have talked about before in the past. And then the last one was congratulations again to Lee Ray for the work you did. I certainly remember working with Dwight Wurzlocker and that fancy office you had over in the water treatment plant, and all the work that you did there and then moving up. So, congratulations, it was great having you and working with you all these years.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Vice President Mock?
I don't think I have anything original, but thank you to our citizen heroes, and thank you to everyone who's currently working for city staff, it's important to say thank you to those people still working, and particular thanks to our retiree, so...
Thank you, and President Sandy had to step away, we wanted to give him the opportunity to step away to an engagement with his kids, so with that, it goes down to me. Certainly want to give a thanks to Lee Ray as well, and wish her luck in the, if it's a second career, if it's retirement, but I want to thank all staff in general. You know, we went through five public meetings tonight, which, if it's not a record, it should be. You know, by the time you send out public notice, prepare these, these staff reports, do all the due diligence, set the agenda, taking minutes for these meetings, just the amount of work that goes into these, I hope people realize that having five public meetings, you know, takes a full week's worth of work, and I really appreciate all staff for their effort in getting through today. So, that's all the comments I'll have, I'll leave it there. Usually, we get to go to adjournment, but today, we're going to go to 4.17, so, Marine, I'm going to have you read it in, and then we're going to ask everybody who's in the room to leave, we're going to have to come back, because we have a couple action items to take that are going to have to be back open to the public, but in the meantime, we're going to have to have people leave after you read it in, they can, I guess, start leaving now, but go ahead, Marine.
Okay, with that, 4.17, discuss the pending litigation, a case of Rice Lake Contracting Corp. doing business as Rice Lake Construction Group versus Construction Engineers U.S., joint venture versus City of Grand Forks, U.S. District Court of District of North Dakota, case number 320 CV164, and East Grand Central Regional Water District versus City of Grand Forks, U.S. Court, case number 320 CV208, and approve city attorney to proceed with the prosecution of the claims that have been brought on behalf of the city in these cases in court, including hiring of any necessary experts.
Thank you. With that, I would be looking for a motion to enter executive session.
I'm waiting for a motion.
We got a motion from Mr. Veen, we got a second from Mr. Weber, all those in...
Just to make sure that the motion is for attorney consultation and it's pursuant to Century Code Sections 4404-19.1 and 4404-19.2. The motion needs to read that.
Okay, is that consistent with your motion? Do you want, does he need to read that, or is that consistent with you reading it there?
It's my understanding what the motion was.
Okay, that's consistent with your motion, thank you. Inconsistent with your second, Mr. Weber? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion, I'll oppose, same sign, I think we're clear that that motion carries. So, now, we were going to enter executive session pursuant to North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2. With that, I'd ask anybody who's not involved to leave the room or to sign off. Greta, do we have a couple that are on? Ms. Dockler would definitely need to stay, she's still on, yes, and then anyone else on? We got that cleared? So, I'm going to read before we enter, so hold off, Greta, till I read everybody off who's in the room, and then actually, if we get the doors closed back there, that'd be great, Sergeant at Arms there, or Mr. Grasser?
Right.
Yep, our city sergeant at arms. So, I'll read out the names first, and I'll set the time, because it's going to take a little time to go through there. So, in the room here, as we enter into executive session, for council members, we have Mr. Weigle, Ms. Dockler, who's online, Mr. Weber, Mr. Kavami, Mr. Veen, myself, Mr. Bochensky. Here we have Ms. Lundmark, Ms. Dorstad, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Gosstead, Mr. Grasser, and Ms. Parvee, and also who will be listening would be Greta Soluski in the back room as part of public info. Is there anyone else that I'm missing? If you haven't heard your name called in earshot, please let me know. That's everybody? Okay, well, with that, now I'm going to read the time that we'll enter executive session. I've got 7:16 on my watch, let's call it 7:16. So, with that, Ms. Soluski, if you could...